Okay, before we get started, you all. Before you all, let's go ahead and everybody stand and we're going to escort in our oath of office. So if everyone will, you have your oath in front of you and I'm gonna ask you to raise your hand.
We were all standing, aren't we all standing?
But if you will, just raise your right hand and repeat it. I, a citizen of Fenton County, State of Georgia, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will well and truly perform the duties of planning commission of the City of Blue Ridge, Georgia. Repeat that, please.
I, a citizen of Fenton County, State of Georgia, do hereby solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of the City of Blue Ridge, Georgia, faithfully enforce the laws of the city and I will defend the Charter here as well as to enforce the law of the City of Georgia and the United States.
And that I will do all in my power to promote the general welfare of inhabitants of the City of Blue Ridge in the common interest thereof.
And that I will do all in my power to promote the general welfare of the inhabitants of the City of Blue Ridge in the common interest thereof.
I do further solemnly swear to affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due to state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I do further solemnly swear and affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due to state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
That I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state which by the laws of the State of Georgia I am prohibited from holding.
That I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state which by the laws of the State of Georgia I am prohibited from holding.
That I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, so help me God.
That I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, so help me God.
Okay, you all are sworn in as members of our planning commission. We appreciate your volunteering to be on this committee and your time and effort. And if you will, if you just sign this form and then give it to me and I'll have our summary together. And then you can begin your work. That's okay, we'll just. Yeah, on that, if you will, the bottom of twenty-two.
So do we need to appoint chairperson?
Yes, do you have your agendas?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to have an agenda?
So John, you have called your meeting. You're ready to start again.
Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting of the planning commission on May 3, 2022. I'm calling it to order. So confirmation of quorum, we have five members. And we need to approve the December 7, 2021, planning commission meeting minutes. Does everyone have a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
The February 1, 2022, planning commission meeting minutes. All in favor?
I may have to apprize them.
Okay. Second to approve?
I'll second to approve.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Unanimous. We don't have to do a call vote, do we? Like each individual?
I would do that when you vote on the final.
Okay, 'cause we haven't done that, but we could.
I think I would do that, just for the point.
Yeah, don't we have to now see who's chairman and vice chairman?
I make the motion that John Swobbe made chair.
I'll second the motion.
I made the motion.
I made the motion that Cindy say as vice chairman.
I'll second that one.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I think we're the, not only oldest people, not you, the oldest members. All right, so there's a rezoning request by Martin Valquez at 78 West Fang Street to rezone from R2 to C2. First, we're gonna do the staff analysis. Eric, are you gonna present that?
Could you log into the staff?
Yeah, please. Alex Smith from the North Coast.
Okay, he'll present.
Mike mentioned, my name is Alex Smith with the North Coast Georgia Regional Commission. I'm here on behalf of Ethan Calhoun to do the staff analysis for the rezoning of the property today. The property is to be rezoned from medium Gimsby residential, R2, to general commercial C2. The parcel is about 0.38 acres in size and is located at 78 West Fang Street, Blue Ridge, of course, Blue Ridge. In the analysis, it mentions that the subject property was previously developed as a single family detached dwelling. The purpose today, the purpose of the request is to redevelop the subject property to a restaurant. In your analysis, do y'all have a couple of penalties in front of you?
I don't.
If you don't, just let me know and I'll make some available. In your analysis, it goes through a list of the surrounding property. You have commercial to the north, commercial to the east, to the west. Are four tracts of land, some of which are residential, other are commercial, and of course, you know, it's a question of Home Depot. For these analysis, Ethan has set up a few questions to qualify it as, does it meet certain standards for approval? And you've got it listed in front of you under the section standard review for review, and they're number one through six, I believe. I believe it's just through six. Yes. For number one, would the proposed amendment allow for use that's generally suitable for the site when compared to other possible uses and uses and zoning adjacent to nearby properties? And the short answer is yes. The surrounding property, as y'all know, is predominantly commercial. It would not be out of the character of the surrounding areas. So, you know, at this point, for that one, the answer is yes. It's gonna meet the form and function for general commercial. The number two, standards for review, whether the proposed amendment would, if it would have an adverse effect on the economic value of any adjacent nearby properties, no, it's not gonna have any adverse impact, because the area is already predominantly commercial. Number three, whether the property could be affected by the proposed amendment when you use as permanent zone. For this one, Ethan mentioned the subject property may only be used or developed from being against the residential as is. The curmazone is dissimilar to all adjacent zoning program. In other words, it's not meeting the overall character of the property. It was predominantly residential at one time, it's no longer. Number four, whether the proposed amendment adopted would result in a use which would or did causes asset burdensome use of existing streets, schools, sewers, water, resources, police fire, and other utilities, fitting into the same thing as, you know, earlier comments, we're dealing with a commercial area already, so it's not gonna create any additional burden on any of the city services. He does mention that the restaurant may meet some challenges in regard to parking and setbacks due to the regroshay of the parcel, and that there was no attached site plan. So, you know, even though it does meet the commercial atmosphere or character, we really can neither confirm or deny the developer's ability to provide sufficient off-street parking, you know, once again, you're dealt with terrain, and we don't really have a site plan to base it on. Number five, whether the subject property under the proposed amendment is in conformity with the policies and intent of the adopted joint comprehensive plan for Fenton County and the cities of Blue Ridge, in Fayetteville and Oregon, as amended. The subject property in the comprehensive plan is identified as single-family residential. While it has historically fit within that atmospheric character of development pattern, you know, it's, there's a difference in the future development plan than the zoning amount, and it's not within character. It's a change in area, it's a change in location, it's a change in use of land, so. There are a few tracts, small tracts, that are shown as a single-family or shown as residential, but those are dwindling, few are living years.
So can I ask a question, Dr. Evans?
Yes.
So those parcels you mentioned, so there are more than one parcel that is currently on residential?
Yes.
That's better kind of systematically being transferred over?
Yes, so there, I don't have mine in front of me, I think there's two to three parcels to the west side.
So this one's the one that had the red house on it, that was just in there?
It did, and he also owns the additional three parcels that have already been rezoned commercially, so.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, they've already been rezoned.
And then y'all get an easement from Tipton back there?
For parking and for traffic to be able to flow smoothly through there.
So there's only just two parcels remaining that are residential, it looks like?
There are, and they're reused as businesses, so.
So you want the three parcels that are about your piece?
They were just recently rezoned.
We already rezoned 51, 61, and 71 West Fang, they've already been rezoned commercial.
So there's a three northern.
Seventy-eight is the left side piece, and yes, we would like that rezoned.
So I need to back up too. Is there a requirement in commercial that there be off-street parking? I'm not sure there is. But that shouldn't be an issue in the rezoning process. It would become an issue when they apply for permitting, right?
Yes, for that.
So is the plan to assemble those parcels?
It's all gonna be put together as one big parcel, so that we can accommodate the restaurant, the restaurant and parking and the roadways and everything that's needed there.
All right, does that conclude the staff analysis? Number six?
Yeah, I'll read through number six. Whether there are other conditions or transitional patterns affecting the use and development of such property if applicable, which gives ground either to approval or disapproval. The subject property is currently a minority of residential, once again, dwindling number, and, you know, that's been discussed just a moment ago. The situation is similar in nature to spot zoning, the analysis said, meaning that there are just a few residential parcels being surrounded by commercial, so there's just a tiny little spot of residential. The proposed C2 rezoning would eliminate that issue. The conclusion is that the recommendation that the requested C2 rezoning be approved based on the findings of the analysis. So, and you've got your list of, short list of findings, your four bullet points there. But once again, it's everything we've discussed. If you have any questions over any of those, I'll be glad to try to answer them at this point.
Anyone have any questions? All right, thank you. And now we will, do you want to present?
Sure. Hopefully we have one more block to present. This is, hey, John, if you will, open it as a public hearing, and that's that, please.
Okay, this portion of the meeting will be opened as a public portion.
Okay, I'm Kristen Young, this is Simone Velasquez, he's here on behalf of his father, Martin Velasquez. We're just here to ask you to please rezone that parcel, the home, to commercial. It is completely surrounded by commercial and Home Depot, and it would look really silly to put an actual home back up there. So as far as planning and zoning, this is kind of the way that it should have been done from the beginning, I believe. So we're just taking care of the fine details that need to be done. As far as the other two that are there that are still zone residential, they are being used commercially, so, you know, there's not any housing being done up there at all. It's completely surrounded by Home Depot, by fifteen, and here's this big chunk of land that's just been cleared out down there.
And I understand you did, you're working with the people that have the parking lot, where the fitness center is?
Yes, so, yes, Ronnie Tipton, we got an easement from Ronnie Tipton for the 51, 61, and 71 West Fang, which we're going to adjoin all of those properties to make it a new property for building the restaurant.
So the main access will be off that parking lot, not anywhere else?
Yes, yes, so there will be, no, that will eliminate a lot of traffic headaches for people too, trying to get in and out of there, and that's gonna be a very good thing for the city, and I'm glad that we were able to pull that off. So, 'cause I don't know if any of you tried to go up there and go through that little way, but coming in and out of there is a very dangerous situation, but you're welcome.
So you're gonna put it all together and there'll just be one restaurant? Okay. Can I ask what kind of restaurant is it?
Well, we own the La Coria Restaurants, so that's what we think.
Are you going to maintain the elevation, or are you gonna grade it down?
I believe we are gonna grade it down a little bit. We've been in touch with Home Depot, they let us take all the trees and stuff off that little back spot where the retaining wall is. So if we can, we're gonna grade it down as much as we can to make it look better, because it just looks funny right now. And we wanna make it look as good as possible, we love the city, we wanna, you know, do what's good for the city, and, you know, taking the housing that was there off of there is definitely going to improve the look of it, for sure.
Any other questions? I think that's it. Is there any opposition? You can go ahead and say, any opposition?
The comment.
I'm not surprised.
I said before, when they rezoned the other three parcels, it's West Fang Street.
Why don't you introduce yourself?
I'm Richard, I live on East Second Street. And so I was here for the last commission meeting. So my question is, is West Fang Street gonna stay a street, an open street to the public?
I think they answered it by saying their access won't be on West Fang, I think, right?
Well, you have, there's other businesses on West Fang, so there's gonna have to be some.
Right, so you can get into this restaurant off of West Fang Street.
The southbound, heading southbound, I always thought.
Yes.
My point at the last meeting was that when they do the site plan, they need to pick some way or another, because people, they're gonna, they're gonna come in that restaurant, and they're gonna go down West Fang Street to get down to the red light at Highway 5, versus going to the Walmart red light. And so is there gonna be access through the parking lot to West Fang Street, and is West Fang Street gonna stay open as a public road?
Richard, it will have to, because there are other people who don't have ingress, egress from the other direction, and you know, other businesses, so it would have to.
But you could cut it off up there at Realty Company. You could abandon that part of West Fang Street where the restaurant's gonna be, is that gonna happen?
You're saying allow access?
You could ask for a road abandonment for the top part, so that we can just walk that area.
So are they gonna block, are they gonna block the road where Realty Company is?
No. So once I present their site plan, we will have to determine already that.
But my point is getting into Dr. Fuzy's office, into the Realty Company, into the, what is it, the nail salon? You could come in from the Home Depot side through some type of access road, then you'd take away a dangerous situation down Highway 5, and West Fang Street.
To, not to catch you, but.
It doesn't.
That, that doesn't have it, we're here to rezone, we're not looking at site plans, we're not looking, so like Rhonda said, that, where you should get involved is when they present their site plan and all that.
How do we get involved with the site plan? There's no public hearing on site plans. So I'm putting it on the record, I did the last commission meeting, planning meeting, I'm putting it on the record now, that.
It might be a good idea to do what you're suggesting.
And they're here listening, so I'm just putting it on the record, that if they abandon the road like they're talking about, that leaves that dangerous situation down there, and if they're gonna have to block the road, otherwise people are gonna use the restaurant parking lot and access roads to get down to West Fang to cut down the highway.
So the road abandonment, when you go up that property, when you turn in to turn onto West Fang, where you can either go right or go to the left, going right goes up to his property, that's a dead end street right there, that piece of property.
Right, but you're opening it up to them?
We're not gonna be opening it up on that side, it's probably going to be cutting through to the other side, so there will be, traffic can be able to flow in and out of that area.
There's a little Riley's parking lot.
Right, I know.
Yeah, it's not gonna go up.
But you gotta come out of old Riley's parking lot into the restaurant, right? Because you got an easement there.
There's an easement that's going to go that way, yes, yeah.
So are they gonna?
Can you come out of the park, this question will be, can you come out of the parking lot and hit West Fang?
Onto active West Fang.
Even though it's been abandoned up here?
That's a personal, it's personal property, so I mean, it's a question for him, and I'm sure he would be willing to do that, because it would be better for him.
I'm just bringing it up so you guys can look at it.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so that, I mean, that would be better for everyone.
It'd be better if everybody could run through it?
Yes.
Duly noted. All right, so now we'll, do we have a motion to approve?
Close the public hearing first, or?
This is something new that we haven't done before.
We're following rules.
Okay, all right, thanks. We will close the public sector of this meeting. All right. So do we have a motion?
And you can have, you have, can have discussion now, and.
Well, usually, don't we do the motion, then discuss, and then vote? Is that?
I meant that we approve.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Well, no, no vote, we're not called to vote. Now we can discuss. We have any discussion?
We can discuss unless there's a second. Seems like a no-brainer to me.
Yeah, yeah.
Dana made the motion, Cindy seconded, so is there any discussion?
I mean, it's a minority commercial, it makes zero sense to keep it residential.
I agree with that, so.
I agree too. It should all be commercial.
Now we'll call the vote. Brian?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
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 And then I vote yes, so unanimous. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the second hearing, excuse me.
Chris?
Just so you know, the second hearing on this is gonna be May 17.
May 17.
Before the city council.
So 5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m.
Thank you.
You have to keep, this is new too, so we have to keep scrolling back.
It's one, flipping pages.
Have to keep going back.
Just the agendas one.
Maybe I have a whole other page. All right, so now rezoning, the next rezoning request is by the Searls Foundation Affordable Housing, located on Boardtown Road and Trackside Lane, to rezone from C2 to R3. Do we have the staff analysis in there?
Do we need to, I just wanna state at this point that I am involved in the project.
They should do that now, John.
Do it now? Here.
That's what you said.
Before we have any discussion?
Well, just put that on the record, yeah.
All right, let's put it on the record.
Yeah, so I am involved in the project, my design studio is, so I will be refraining from voting when it comes to that point.
And I do also offer consulting services for the project, so I may refuse that right as well.
So we're gonna have three votes, okay?
Is everybody ready to go forth?
I can find it in this thing.
Get all the waiting.
You can start.
Okay. So as mentioned, we're looking at a piece of property that will be rezoned by the Searls Foundation, Affordable Housing Fund, it's a LLC, it's gonna be rezoned from C2, general commercial to high density residential, R3, the tract of land totals approximately nine acres, just slightly over, and is located at the intersection of Boardtown Road and Trackside Lane. And you see, listed as the text parcel ID number in your analysis. Currently, the property is undeveloped, and the petitioner's purpose for the request is to redevelop the property for multi-family housing in the form of 84 apartment units. If you, if you're looking at surrounding land uses, you have to, you have to the north, you have commercial C2, to the west, you have commercial C2, to the south, we are looking at residential agriculture, and to the east, we have. And to the east, we have some parcel lands zoned, R two. So the northmost tract is three acres. Just give me one second, get the...look over the notes. Okay, and the adjacent tracts to the east that are R two, they are...they're already multifamily government housing. The southern tract...Ethan writes this stuff a little bit different. This...okay, so the southern tract, the most south of the residential is about seven acres. The residential agriculture to the south is six point eight, approximately seven acres. To the west, the undeveloped tract is four point two acres. That's your commercial land. Okay, so is there any questions over there? I know that is kind of a hard watchword. So just looking for the standard to review. Would the proposed amendment allow a use generally suitable for the site when compared to other possible uses? And the uses and zoning of adjacent nearby property? Development in this area of the city appears to have a pattern where commercial zoning and land use parallels between, so residential and commercial are adjacent to each other. Let's see. The subject property is near the southern boundary of the city where development has been less intensive than the city downtown. There are multiple commercial and residential developments in the surrounding area, including adjacent government housing or government housing complex. While the proposed rezoning would create an island of R three zoning at this location, the character of the multifamily affordable housing already exists. So that's...the statement is, there's already multiple multifamily located. And so we don't see it being out of the character of the area. Number two, whether the proposed amendment would adversely affect the economic value of uses of adjacent nearby properties. The subject property has one, only a couple of undeveloped tracts in the area. The request rezoning would allow for apartment development to be developed on the subject property, which would establish entirely new character. But there's also already multifamily housing nearby. The history would be considerably more. But as we mentioned already, there's already established character of...